Let's call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council scheduled for Monday, December 2, 2013. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the community of Batavia begins to commemorate and celebrate the very festive holiday season that is upon us with the arrival of Thanksgiving and soon to be the Christmas holidays, followed by New Year's, we are ever mindful of the many gifts and opportunities that we have been given, and we know that we are a community that have much to be thankful for. Certainly this past weekend and the success attained by Batavia High School is something that our community takes great pride and admiration in and speaks well to the commitment of our community towards its young people and to the parenting that is practiced in our community, and for all that, we are thankful. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are away on foreign soils, serving in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them, along with all others from our country who are serving so ably in those foreign soils. Tonight, we ask for guidance and understanding and vision as we act upon the items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us are here in our hearts to do what we feel is the very best for the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Vasiliyan, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan. Brown.
Aye.
Here.
Holman. Clark.
Aye.
Here.
Sam. Atech.
Aye.
Here.
Vasiliyan. Stark.
Aye.
Here.
Serone. Chanset.
Aye.
Here.
McFadden. Wolf.
Aye.
Here.
Brown. Sparks.
Aye.
Here.
Clark. O'Brien.
Aye.
Here.
Atech. Callahan.
Aye.
Here.
Stark. Holman.
Aye.
Here.
Chanset. Sam.
Aye.
Here.
Wolf. Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Here.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no no's, none absent.
Serone.
Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Alderman Sparks, please. Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected members of the city council are present
Thank you, your honor. Consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file:
in accounted for, so we have obviously the necessary quorum to conduct business.
A) The Plan Commission Minutes for October 23, 2013;
Moving then to item number four on our agenda, items to be removed, added, or changed on
B) The Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for September 24th, November 5th, November
tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services.
7th, and November 12, 2013;
Do you have anything?
Yes, I have one thing. C) The Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for October 28, 2013; Item fifteen, the closed session for purchase in Sarah Electric Power. D) The October 2013 Financial Report; We have nothing for the closed session unless somebody wants to talk anyway, so we'll take E) The 2012 Police Pension Minutes, both compliance reports; that off the agenda. F) The 2012 Fire Pension Minutes, both compliance reports.
Okay.
The approvals are G) November 22, 2013 Payroll, the amount is $736,436.84;
Anybody else? Okay, why don't we take a vote then to remove item number fifteen on the agenda?
H) The November 22, 2013 Accounts Payable Check Register, the amount is $2,413,053.71;
You want to make that a formal motion?
I move that we remove item fifteen, closed session.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the motion to remove
I) The City Council Minutes for November 4, 2013;
item fifteen from the agenda. Clerk call the roll.
J) Resolution 13-140-R, dedication of the portion of Blue Bell Lane;
Sparks.
K) The Resolution 13-146-R, accepting quick claim deed for detention area in Fox Trail East Phase 1 subdivision; L) Resolution 13-145-R, accepting grants of easements for parking purposes on South Batavia Avenue. Move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atech.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address the seat? If you'd come up and use the -- if you'd give us your name and address for the clerk, please.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Keppel. I live at 1420 Becker Avenue in Batavia. And actually, tonight, I'm here representing two gentlemen from the community who could not be here. You'll recognize them, they're longtime members of the community who have given much to Batavia. And because they could not be here, they've sent, in one regard, a letter and then another comments. The first is from Dick Benson. He says, "Honorable Mayor, City Council Friends, tonight you are approving a budget for 2014. If you increase the levy by two cents as you have stated in your budget papers, the levy for 2013 payable in 2014 will be seventy-two cents. This represents an increase of nearly twenty-eight percent over the last five years when the city's tax rate was fifty-six cents. Your budget shows a total budget of $95.6 million for 2014 as compared to a budget of $93.4 million for 2013. The budget says that the 2014 budget is $7.2 million more than projected 2013, or an eight percent increase over 2013 projected actual. The rate of inflation in 2013 has been 1.7 percent. Why the big increase in the budget? The economy has not been that good during this period, and is still not where the nation needs to be. In addition to the levy, you are planning to raise electric rates in 2014. According to an internal, Batavia's rates are higher in all categories than even comm-ed. How can you say that Batavia's rates are competitive? We have had increased tax rates every year since 2007. When is it going to end? Is the object to find ways to spend money, almost like the federal and state governments? How much longer is this going to go on before people can no longer afford to live here, especially retirees who are on a pension or on social security? The City Council needs to get a firm handle on the costs of operating the city so that they can be brought back in line. We cannot afford to spend money on every piece of art and hiring consultants at the drop of a hat when the city has as many employees as it does. Richard Benson, 380 North Water Street, Batavia, Illinois." Now, the second is from Joe Marconi, who could not be here. He wants to give you an update. Michael Funky, the lawyer contracted by Mr. Marconi to look into the Prairie State Power Plant deal, has been consulting with contract attorneys and is developing a recommended course of action. Since the city and its lawyers have given every appearance of having given up and given in to the devastating contract for electricity, Joe Marconi asks that the mayor and city council consider hiring Mr. Funky to represent the city and its taxpayers in an effort to release us from the contract that has already cost the taxpayers of Batavia over a million dollars of taxpayer money held in reserve, in addition to significantly higher-than-market-value electric bills, with millions more in reserves projected and huge rate hikes being considered in this budget. Thank you. And finally, from my own perspective, I know you work very hard, and especially if you have to go through many, many pages of budget and all those numbers, it's a lot of work. And I know when people get mad over their property taxes, it's not your fault. Most of that goes from -- comes from the school district. And if anybody asks you about the school district, they have the -- you might have seen the signs around town, "The lower the levy deal," looking to get some of that money back and to have our taxes decreased. So I know it's not your fault, but please be conscientious with the budget and the levy and all the money, because it comes from taxpayers, it comes from our pockets, from hard-working people. Even sales taxes doesn't come directly from the property taxes, but it comes from people. And when you look at that, I can't even imagine what $95 million is. That's an unreal number. It's almost like Monopoly money, where it's so big you can't have a grasp of it. But if you just take the things and try to look in terms of how people see it, if you look at a million dollars, if you -- that could buy you four average houses in Batavia, bought outright, not mortgaged. If you take into account the way most people buy their houses with a down payment and a mortgage, that's a lot of houses. That's a lot of money to a lot of people. And you start looking at what it costs. When it comes up $185,000 for granite to bury in the ground, how much is that in terms of a working person, one of the people in the smaller houses in Batavia? How long would they have to work to get that money? Or even in terms of your own, if you make more than that, how long would you take to work, for you to work, to get that money to bury in the ground? And is it worth it? Hundred seventeen thousand dollar arches and all these other -- all these additional things. With an economy that's hurting, people who are hurting and struggling to put food on their table, think about it. Try to put the money in terms of real, tangible items, and not just look at it as this nebulous idea that is out there, that you're just playing with. It's easy to throw money, a million dollars here, a million dollars there, but it means a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I could right now, Susan. No, we'll have other things to talk at the end of the meeting. I'd like to bring John Beddits out here from BATV. John has given his two weeks' notice and is going to be leaving BATV. I just wanted to recognize him for the past six years of hiding out in that little control room over there, making sure that these meetings get out to the public, and all his work that he's done for BATV over the years as technical director. He and I have worked quite closely together on a lot of projects. He's done a lot above and beyond what he gets paid for, and he will still hang around as a volunteer, he won't be going too far, but he is moving on, and I just wanted to recognize him tonight for all that he's done for getting our meetings out to the public and all the other things that he's done with BATV over the last six years.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a lot of fun doing these. I actually have learned quite a bit about public government, a lot about our town. Can't say I've ever been into sports as much as I have in the last six years, but definitely it's been a good time. I'm still -- you'll still see me around here, still plan on working, doing some of these meetings, so you might see some new faces around here, but I'll be sure to make sure they know how to take care of you guys, make sure you're streaming and everything, so...
I'd certainly like to second Alderman Wolf's comments. You have been here as a mainstay and are very faithful, and you've always been able to, when there's a technical glitch, you always seem to be able to overcome it and get us through it, and appreciate the good efforts you do. I'm totally amazed by the number of people who watch this city council meeting with regularity on BATV, and I'm very proud of the fact that if you go to many of our neighboring communities, this does not exist, that televising of public government just is not a thing in a lot of other towns. And at least as far as the city council goes in Batavia, we've been doing this now, you know, live or otherwise, since 1981. And so we're kind of, hopefully, in the early ages of trying to broadcast public TV, and it's only because of people like yourself with your talents and your interest in it that we've got to this rate of success we have. So deeply thank you from, on behalf of the city council, for your good efforts on all of our behalves, and thank you for all the people in Batavia who have been more educated and enlightened because of your good work in allowing them to see firsthand what the city council is doing on a moment-by-moment basis down here. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, then let's move to item number seven, which is a presentation tonight by Batavia Access and an update on the Children's Toy Drive. Mr. Bailey, or Mr. Dubus, or both of you?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council, and I told you we would be back. So here we are. Before, I'd like to just take a minute, and Batavia had a lot of history this Saturday. If you didn't know it, you're looking at my shirt here, it says, "Football State Finals 2013." It's out of code. It should say, "Batavia Bulldogs, State Champions." Unbelievable.
If you want one, they're for sale.
Okay. Unbelievable. What a game. I'd just like to be one of the parents here in Batavia and past Bulldog to say congratulations to the team, to the coaches, and to the mothers and fathers of those gentlemen that played that game on Saturday. History was made, being a Bulldog, we now have a state championship in Batavia. Another history was made here in Batavia, as well as it being made on December 15, the toy drive. But the history was made here in Batavia where, Mayor, we had 15,000 Batavians that showed up at that football game. We have the state record. Fifteen thousand citizens from Batavia went to DeKalb. That tells a lot about what Batavia and what Batavians are here in Batavia. So congratulations, team. I'm proud to be a Batavian and be a Bulldog. Once a Bulldog, always a Bulldog. Once a Batavian, always a Batavian. Looking at the table over here with all the toys, I really can't thank the council and the city for, you know, really helping us out this year to make this a success. We're going to give the toys away on December 15. It's kind of like a football game, I guess. We're in the fourth quarter, we're in the red zone, we got thirteen days to make it. My wife and daughter, and Rudy's wife, are working diligently tonight, putting those rooms together for now a count of 182 families. The big numbers this year fall between the six to twelve boys and girls, we have over 220 in that listing. And the other big number, they told me, is the thirteen to sixteen-year-olds, which we have 127 this year. So those are just big numbers between those two age groups. You know, are we going to make it? We're in the red zone, you know, and I know that we're going to make it. There's no way that Batavia will let us down. I mean, everybody sticks behind us, and it's going to make us another successful year. So far, we have collected eleven checks from Batavia, we've collected $25, and I know that's just a start, from where we're going to end up on the 15th. So again, I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, for the offerings that we have here tonight. Look forward to making this year another success, and we're going to make it. I mean, we're in the red zone, it's thirteen days, I guarantee you we'll make it here in Batavia. Thank you very much.
Roy, on the 15th is the starting time when we're going to start conducting the folks through there, 1 o'clock or noon?
I think it's 2 o'clock. 2 o'clock we start.
What I'd like to do, as we've done in the past, is certainly extend to any of the members of the city council who would like to maybe stop over prior to 2 o'clock and just take a tour through the old Baptist church and see the toy collection. I'll be there, certainly Roy and Rudy will be there, and a number of other folks, and if you'd like to stop by and see what that's all about, it's an interesting opportunity to see how in-depth this thing really gets, and really all the great and good work that is done here, and really, it is a very meaningful experience, I guess the best way to describe it. So I think we all owe Roy and Rudy and their families a real debt of gratitude for being the stalwarts of this and keeping this alive and well and going stronger and bigger and better than ever. And I know we have Roy's mother watching out for us from the heavens above to make sure that -- because I'd hate to think of what would be flying around here if we didn't do this.
Yeah, yeah. You don't even want to be in that program.
Roy and I grew up with her, and I don't want to go there.
No, we don't want to go there, so, you know, we will make it. I know the Batavia people will get behind us, and, you know, it's -- we'll make it. You know, I'll come back later after the 15th and give you an update to tell you it's going to be 650 children or 700 children, I really don't know. I mean, these are big numbers, numbers that we have not seen in the past, but it's early. I mean, Rudy and I have got very, very nervous up till the third or fourth day before we had to give the toys away, but somehow, we always make it. So thank you very much for your time, and we'll look for you. Thanks.
Moving then to item number eight, which is ordinance 13-46, establishing a moratorium on applications for certain uses in the GC General Commercial District. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
Your honor, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to Alderman Atech. She took my place at the last J-Cow meeting in my office.
Okay. During October, the committee met, and there were some concerns raised about number of non-retail, the number of non-retail uses on Randall Road and in the general commercial district. And we had some discussion and decided the best way to handle it would be to ask staff to look into creating a resolution outlining a six-month moratorium, so we would have a little more time to discuss and decide how to best handle it. So they did, and they recommend a six-month moratorium on the general commercial district plan unit developments and annexations agreements. Is that correct, Scott? Do you have anything to add?
This is on -- yeah, that is correct. The moratorium would be for six months on the conditional uses in the annexation agreements, and then the certain uses that are outlined in the staff report in the general commercial district for permitted uses also. So those uses, they would not be able to submit applications for during the six-month moratorium until we've had a chance to develop some recommendations and bring that back to the council, and then it has to go back to the Plan Commission for approval, and then back to the council for ratification.
All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district. All right. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1346, establishing a moratorium on the application for certain uses in the general commercial district.
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of ordinance 13-46. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Atech.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Ordinance 13-46 is approved, fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is Resolution 13-143-R, the 2014 Annual City of Batavia Budget. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, your honor. We were originally going to bring this to council at the last council meeting, but there were still some unanswered questions. We had one additional meeting in the last J-Cow. We cleared up some questions. We also ended up removing $10,000 for cold storage of the trolley and leaf machines. What we'll do is re-prioritize space in the public works facility to store them ourselves. We removed the $68,000 of the increase in the leaf and brush fee for this year, and from the, we also removed $8,000 to, for a piece of equipment, a gator, universal piece. From the electric utility, we removed $135,000 for a small budget truck. It ended up being repaired. In the future, if it breaks down, we may end up having to either repair it, rent, or replace it. We'll hit that when we get to it. Are there any other questions from the council regarding the budget? So hearing none, I move that we pass Resolution 13-143-R, the 2014 Annual Budget.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the 2014 Annual Budget. Any discussion? Alderman Sparks, you want to say something?
No.
Clerk call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atech.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
No.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Clark.
Twelve to two.
Vote is approved, twelve yes, two no's, for the ordinance, or excuse me, Resolution 13-144-R.
for staff having tools in their tool belt to work with, as we've often referred these grants and programs to. And I do appreciate staff's work on this and the committee's work on this, and I know that's been very well gone through and scrutinized and put together in a way that everybody's happy with it. I just personally feel as though this has just gone a little bit too far. I don't feel as though we ought to be funding businesses or helping fund a business's sign. This has been something that I've felt this way about for many, many years, as we've discussed signs and participation in funding them. You know, I don't have a problem with what the committee's council's wishing to do here with it tonight. I just, myself, I do not support it.
Alderman Sparks?
I pretty much echo Alderman Brown. Just to note, though, on the agenda, it says that past J-Cow eleven to zero was actually ten to one, me being the one. Thank you.
Anybody else? Kirk Colerole, then, on the resolution?
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Okay. The motion to officially cancel any J-Cows on December twenty-fourth or thirty-first is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay.
May I have a question for the administrator?
Sure.
Bill, you had just made a comment that the brush collection was completed.
I knew Scott said that it wasn't going to happen till this week, because there's a
pile of leaves still in the first ward. I just want to make sure that it's going to happen. Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving to item twelve, committee reports. Alderman Brown, anything on community development?
Just a couple of meetings to announce, Your Honor. The J-Cow for tomorrow night starts at seven thirty. We have just a couple of items on our agenda. One is the execution of a deed for a lot on South Forest Avenue that was advertised for a public bid for sale, and that'll be on tomorrow night's agenda. We've had a discussion about this previously. And then also, we'll have some discussion on Streetscape. And then Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet December ninth. It's a Monday at five thirty. And then the next J-Cow, which is December tenth, is scheduled for seven thirty, and we have the Tomley Building presentations at that meeting. I believe there's, what, Bill, two or three, two different proposals that we'll be listening to and having some discussion on. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Looks like for tomorrow night's J-Cow, there is going to be, there's on the agenda right now, a closed session for the purchase and sale of electric power. If we don't need to have it, we'll just pull it off tomorrow night's agenda. It looks like that's a tentative item on the next couple of meetings, anyway, so it's an ongoing issue.
I think it's kind of fluid.
Right. So, that's all I have for Public Utilities.
Okay. Government Services, oh, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
I don't have anything on either one of the J-Cows coming up.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you. There is nothing in Government Service for the next two J-Cows.
Wow. Okay. Going to item fourteen, the mayor's report. I would just like to publicly, number one, congratulate the Batavia High School Bulldogs.
Skip thirteen.
What did I skip? Oh, other business? Do we have any other business?
I have one thing. I still have a lot of questions about the Walgreens transaction. I think it's pretty complex, and I think that we could use a little bit more discussion as a committee, and would like to see it put on the December seventeenth agenda for more discussion.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Sparks?
I'm just going to plug my Christmas display. You weren't. It was really tough this year. I didn't, I almost didn't have it. The first weekend, I ended up with too many leaves in my yard. The second weekend, I had three inches of water in my yard. The next weekend, I had frozen yard. But with the help of my family, I was able to complete it, and it opened up last night. So, we collect food for the Batavia Food Pantry, non-perishable items. The container should be out there tomorrow night, I hope, but the path is open. It's nine forty-three Blue Stem Lane. There's a lit path that goes all the way through the backyard, and you're welcome to walk on the path. I want to thank Home Depot, because they gave me the use of a lift to put some lights up high this year, so... But, that's all I have to say. I have lights. A lot of them.
Okay. Let me go, then, back to fourteen, the mayor's report. I wanted to make mention, number one, obviously, we all know that the Batavia High School football team is state championships, are state champions after their sparkling victory in DeKalb on Saturday. And I can't say enough for everything that was done to get us to that point, all the coaching, and all the parenting, and all the fan support that went into this. As you know, the city participated on a couple of occasions to kind of help cheer the team on, so to speak. When they left town on Saturday morning, the fire and police department escorted them down to the City Limits, and then when they returned, two weeks ago, we said we would give them a nice return back into town, and so we went back down to the City Limits at Mooseheart and Randall to sit and wait for the buses, and when we were sitting down there, only one bus showed up. While we had let three buses go, only one came back. And so, we escorted the one bus up Randall Road to Batavia High School, and when they got to Feast Drive, they pulled off to the side of the road and didn't want to go into the high school. Well, come to find out, the other two buses somehow had gotten themselves separated, and they were over on Fabian Parkway near Kirk Road someplace, and so we had to get them redirected back and get them down Western Avenue, and then over onto Feast, and then the fire department and police reorganized and brought in the three buses from that point. So, I told the school folks after that that we wanted to better coordinate this and keep everybody together. So, last Saturday, the deal was, is that we would have them stay on I-88, come across the east side of town, east side of the river, and come up Kirk Road, and then we could bring them into town from the east by, we would sit at the Batavia Apartments parking lot, and we sent one squad down to Kirk Road at Wind Energy, and they met them and brought them up Kirk Road. And then when we got them on Wilson Street, we had a fire truck, the chief's car, the squad car, two squad cars, and we brought them through downtown Batavia, up to Batavia Avenue, and then down Batavia Avenue to Main Street, and then out Main Street to the high school, red lights and siren, in full celebration mode. And I had the honor of riding in the passenger seat of the head squad car, running this thing. And as I told the crowd last night, I've been in a lot of parades in my day in Batavia, but I'd never seen this phenomenon that I saw Saturday night, in the number of people, both male and female, who were standing along the route over Lake River and Wilson, and further up Wilson Street, and then specifically, when we got to the high school. The number of people that when we either passed by them, or we got to them, they were just a puddle of tears. And it was all good tears. They were all very happy, but the emotions were flowing so strongly that there were all these people that were really in high emotion over this whole thing, which was great to see. But as I, it almost reminded me of when I was a kid there in Batavia in the nineteen fifties, there were a lot of veterans of World War II that were in town at that point. And they used to tell you stories about the Great War, and one of the memories many of them had was when they were in the Liberation Army, and they were going back into France and Luxembourg, or over in the Pacific, and they would go into a village that had been held by the enemy, and they would arrive, everybody would come out, and, you know, cheer and throw flowers, and many of the people would cry. And they used to talk about how they had these parades where everybody was crying. Well, in Batavia, Saturday afternoon, we had a parade. It was a fun, happy parade, but there was a lot of emotion pent up into it, and there were sure a lot of people crying, which was, I guess, a good thing to see. It spoke to the heart of what this town was all about. So, yesterday, we had another escort for the, they got a couple of flatbed trucks, and before Santa Claus arrived, we had a little ceremony down here at the Pegmont Center under the sponsorship of the Park District, allowed the school, allowed us, the city, to bring in the school as a kind of a preview to Santa Claus. And it worked out quite well, but when we got here, and we got the team up, and whatever have you, one of the things the team decided to do was to give a, I'm assuming this is to the community, a game ball to the community, and they all signed it, and used to come over and look at it after the meeting. And when they, they gave it to me, and I said, "Well, you know, this really belongs to the people of Batavia, so my intentions are, we'll give this to the depot museum, and this can be part of the museum collection forever." But I think it's a very unique piece of Batavia history, because as I pointed out, it was a hundred and one years ago in nineteen twelve when we won the state high school basketball championship. So, it was a hundred and one, exactly a hundred and one years later that we won the football championship. And I've had some local sports historians tell me that that puts Batavia in kind of a, kind of a very unique mold, because there are not a lot of high schools in the state of Illinois that can say that they have won, been the state champion in both basketball and football. And Batavia is. And I think, in thinking about our neighboring communities around us, I don't know if anybody else has ever done this, as far as I can remember. There aren't many out there that have that honor. And so, Batavia, as I told the crowd last night, we really did make, you know, we made a lot of history. This was one for the new history book when we get it written, but, I mean, this whole thing about being one of the few in the state that's ever won both championships, I think speaks well to the high school program and what Batavia's all about. So, if you wanted to have a weekend where you really got into the heart and soul of the town, and really saw the basic fibers of what make this place the kind of a special place to, for us all to live and work and be very proud of, and, you know, for all, any consternation that we take on, as a public official, when you have a day like Saturday and Sunday, and you see all this good things flowing, and people breaking down in emotion because they're happy about what's happening, it makes it kind of all worthwhile for what you're trying to do here. So, I just wanted to pay a tribute to the moment, because I think it really was in the life of Batavia, you know, this was one of those moments that all those, I looked at all these little kids that were here last night, and on Saturday, standing along that route, or out that game at Northern, and I'm sure that this is going to be something all of those young folks are going to remember for the next eighty or ninety years of their lives. And so, you know, we really did create a memory here this weekend that is going to live on as a legacy of this town, and what Batavia's truly all about for a long time. And then, as I was standing out at the end of the, we parked the squad and got out, there's the rest of the parade, and then the team got off, and I was amazed at the number of true, tried and true Batavians that really had no connection to the team, who had made the effort to come out there on Saturday night and just stand there and applaud, and people that, many of them retired, you know, hadn't been to a game in many years, but really got caught up in the spirit of what this was all about, and that, hey, Batavia done it. And we really, I think, had a very proud moment here. So, I just wanted to thank everybody from the coaching staff at the high school, to the school board, to all the parents of all these kids, and, you know, we really showed ourselves in a very tried and true perspective. As you may remember, back in two thousand and six, we almost got there, we came in second place on that occasion. And it's interesting, as I recall that, because, and I'm wondering what's going to be the kind of the bounce back from this, because when we did it in two thousand and six, it was right when the recession was about to kick in, but it hadn't quite got here yet. And we had a number of people stop into City Hall, or call, or whatever have you, and asking questions about moving to Batavia, because we had had this great success in the basketball season, or football season. Now, we have won the state championship in the football season, so I'm thinking that there's a lot of folks out there who aspire to see their children in winning football programs, and it wouldn't surprise me that this has some impact on specifically the housing market in Batavia, that there will be, I am, trust me as I'm sitting here, there's going to be some people that are going to say, "Well, I'm coming out, I'm moving to that town," because this is, I want my kids in that school system where they got this great school, high school football program. So, these are the types of things that kind of drive, you know, the incentives of interest in people to move to your town. And I remember in 'oh six, I had a gentleman show up, and I guess he never got here, but he was coming from out of state, and he had a daughter that was quite talented in football, and he wanted to know what I thought Batavia High School's reaction were going to be if she came out for the team. And I remember sharing that with Coach Gasberry and getting his perspective on it, and he was very open-minded, and, you know, I guess it happens in other schools. And so, I mean, you get these types of things coming, so that will be one of the impacts of fame and success that probably Batavia, not that we're going to get any girl football players, but we are, I think, going to get some folks wanting to get themselves situated in the Batavia school district so they can be at the football program. So, those are all kind of magic moments that kind of make the town. And as I say, it was a moment, as Roy said, and earlier, we had fifteen thousand people bought tickets on the Batavia side of the bleachers of the stadium out there at Northern, and that number speaks to it. So, Alderman Wolf, do you have any comments to make about this?
I do, Your Honor. I have a few things to go along with your hundred and one years between that, since I worked at BATV with a guy who is really into stats and a lot of fun numbers, three, or thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-six days between state titles for this school. One of the other things that I think speaks to the dominance of this team over this fourteen games, the Richards defense allowed a hundred and fifty-one points in fourteen games. The two games that Batavia played against them, forty percent of those points out of that entire season were in those two games. So, that speaks a lot to what that team did over the entire season. Some very interesting things that also go along with this, the Chicago Bears are going to recognize all eight state champion teams at the finals, regular season game at the end of this month.
Any of them?
Be interesting to find out. There has been one, one Batavia player that did make it to the Bears, played on their practice squad. Mike Garrity was on the practice squad for the Bears. And on another note, this is Geneva week, so as my hat, as BATV announcer, everybody needs to get out to Batavia High School on Friday. And we did get the administration to do it again this year. It is the girls' game followed by the guys' game. So, it's an entire night starting at five thirty that, you know, is one of the wildestes. As crazy as the game was out there, and I think for maybe one or two, maybe three times in my life that I've been speechless, was out on the field after that game looking up into the crowd. It was just amazing to see that many people all focused on one thing, and then when they came out with that trophy, the place just went nuts. And to see that from the perspective of the field, I feel truly blessed that I got to be down there and see that. So, yeah, it did get to me, too.
All right. Any other Bulldog fans want to chirp in? Alderman Sam was here with her camera and tagged them out of us.
I did, yep. You can find lots of pictures on the Main Street Facebook page.
BATV will have a season recap, all the games available, including all the footage that we were able to shoot at the state finals game that we can't show the whole game, but there'll be a lot of highlights in it.
I bet you if we do the same tour through Geneva, we'd get just as many tears, but not the same reason.
That was the rumor down on River Street, as we were all down there waiting for the team and the fire trucks and everything to get there, was, is, where are they? Well, they were driving real slow going through Geneva, holding the trophy. Man, this is heavy.
They didn't go near Geneva.
I know they didn't.
Okay. I guess that's kind of it. Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn the city council meeting.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Brian for adjournment. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My voice got told it.